Start with public input and per RSA 18974, we'll start the clock at 6:00 PM. I'm not seeing anyone for public input, but we'll start the clock and the clock will go for 30 minutes. Okay. Great. So next on our agenda is the PTO update. Do we have anyone from the PTO?
No, they usually email me.
Okay.
But I know that they have Get Fit in May this Saturday. And you can register onsite, right? Yes, that's right.
Great. Okay.
Is there a rain date for that or do they have it rain or shine?
I think it's rain or shine.
Okay. I think it is rain or shine.
Huh?
Oh, they're hot.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Great. Thank you. So we will start with our SAU 16 administrative update and the first item on the list is the Fund Balance. Molly?
So within your board pack is a current year convention. This term of year, well, before this term of year, we always tell teachers that you have to buy things to get to the end of the year. So you already see a little bit of supplies across the board with people doing those year purchases. As we moved to the new system, we took a really big deep dive on encumbrances and employee encumbrances for the remaining days of the year. So that's why there's some changes in the power of the employees. We took a good look at food service and we did have to increase the bad debt. So the food service fund can't cover students that do have to pay for lunch, but haven't paid for lunch. That does have to get transferred to the general fund. So that's why you see a little bit of an increase of $2,800 in that section. And then just Rusty bearing up for summer and getting out of the building, looking beautiful in the operations. Did anyone have any questions?
I don't know how this one might have been.
So with that, the revenue more than planned and the expense less than planned is looking at 1.33 billion land, which is in line with what we said last time. I do know they did place the QO for volunteers in program. So that's now moved into actuals instead of on the bottom line, we're used to the encumbrances. So the encumbrances should only be encumbrance points at this point in time. Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
All right. I'd just like to add that I did meet with Ryan and he connected with Tanya about sometimes they prepare a wish list on Fund Balance and there are no items for the wish list because they felt like the board has supported the budget and the big issue was the curriculum, which she just mentioned. And so they are good and they just want to thank the board for being so supportive and the community for passing the next year's budget.
I have a question. When does the work get done on the playground at Main Street School? When?
June 13th.
So they'll start with that padding and the chips and everything? Okay. Good. All right. Great.
I just have a few things. One is the meeting calendar for next year is, it was in your packet. And I basically mimicked our normal schedule of the second Tuesdays at 6:00 PM. You'll notice around budget time, there's a little bit of flex because we have those RSAs that limit us to a certain week for the deliberative, et cetera, and try to put in snow dates. So unless there's any questions on that, I would look for a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
I move to accept the dates for next year's meetings. Any discussion?
Looked good to me.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. And I have a couple of things. There you would see two resumes in front of you, one for, I'm not going to say their names in case you have any questions, but you have two in front of you. One CM and one AC. I have met with both of them and they were both the nominee, the recommended for nomination to me. As you can see, they both have great experience there for the case managing positions. Probably both will be placed at Main Street if all goes according to plan, but certainly both candidates are qualified and I feel very confident in nominating them to the board. So if you had any particular questions, I would ask that we go into non-public. If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the nominations of the two folks brought to you.
And Esther, just to refresh my memory, these are two, these were vacancies?
These were vacancies, yes.
Okay. I move to accept the two nominees, AC and CM.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
They look like great additions. They do.
And now that you've accepted them, I'd like to say it's Amanda Collins and Chelsea Morse. So congratulations to both of them. They're really excited about the move to Exeter School System. The other piece, I just want to keep the board informed. You may hear about our solar net metering system that Chris Andruski and Rusty have been working on all year and Exeter School District is one of the districts that will be included because they have solar. What that means is the solar panels to get credit for extra electricity that's produced. And they did meet with two other vendors to conduct business with. So in other words, if we produce extra, then we'll get a kickback. And when we don't have enough, we can draw on that kind of bank. We went with Freedom Energy because they already have conducted their interconnection study, which is part of what they need to do, any company needs to do to be able to run this kind of program. So it's good news for us. We will get a portion of the kickbacks as divided by our districts. So there, the co-op is one, this district is one, Kensington, Stratum, and East Kingston are the districts that will be participating based on their solar stuff already. So I just wanted you to be aware of that in case you heard anything about it. That's what it is. So that's good news. End of year is going, a lot of hiring, et cetera. We're working hard, I think, to get everybody wrapped up quickly, as you can see, because we feel like the sooner we can do it, the stronger our candidate pool. So I'm not sure, are there any other positions we're working towards right now to fill? So paraprofessionals, so if you are, again, for the folks at home, since Patrick isn't here, I'll use his words. If you're interested in being a paraprofessional, apply, 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 and let's get set up for next year. So that's all I have. If anyone has any questions or any other thing you want to talk about from central office? All right. Thank you.
All right. Great. So moving on to the approval of the meeting minutes, I think we'll take these separately. So the first were the public meeting minutes from April 9th. Did anyone have any questions about the minutes or need to make any changes?
Motion to approve. Can I do that?
Do we have a second to approve the public meeting minutes from April 9th?
Second.
Great. And I know we have one person that was not there. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And who needs to abstain? Susan is abstaining. And then can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the non-public session from April 9th?
Motion to approve the non-public session meeting minutes.
Great. I'll second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And abstentions? Susan is abstaining. Great. Moving right along. We will start with you, Tanya, with your report from Main Street.
Hello. Nice to see you everyone. Mine's pretty short and we sent our calendar, so I'll just give you a couple of highlights. They're going on at Main Street School. So we've had today, our second graders went on their first field trip of the year to Great Bay. It was a wonderful day. They had a great time. Last week kindergarten walked to the Exeter River. They have a unit that they do on the river and so they go down and look at the animals and then they have their celebration of learning coming up. First grade had their celebration of learning last week. That was on animal adaptations and they extended it this year to also talk about, part of the standard says, how could you use the adaptation to fix a human problem? And so the kids were able to make some inventions and they were really cute. They did a nice job doing that. So thanks to all the families that were able to make it out to see that. We've also had some evacuation drills lately and fire drills. Those were successful. We're fortunate to have some guest speakers for our kids. We have Bob Shagn kindergarten and then we have Ellen, I don't know if I was there last name correctly. What do you say? Ethel? She's doing the second grade. And then this week we started our end of the year benchmarking for assessment. So we have I-Rate that's going and Acadians is also going on. So hopefully we can see some good end of the year growth. There's been a lot of creativity with our teams on different win groups and organizing them. We just met as a leadership team this afternoon and they said they've seen a lot of progress with the kids and the kids have liked the arrangements. So we're excited to see if that's paid off on those two formats. We wanted to say thank you for our May 24th day again. We were able to lock in the trainings for our new literacy program. So thank you for providing that and allowing it and just remind you to families that we have that day out for the kids. And coming up, we have some field days that we're prepping for, which always feels like a signal that it's the end when we start looking at field day schedules. So it's like now we're in the final stretch and there's still some cool things going on, some learning going on, but field days are always a highlight. And we have Get Fit in May on Saturday, so we hope everyone's able to attend. And then the last thing I wanted to make a shout out for was Exeter Subaru donated, New Peak Main Street School to donate $3,000 too. And so there's some stipulations, but we have to pick six teachers, they each get $500. We didn't really know a good way to do that, so we did a drawing that those people don't know yet. So it's kind of secret until we partner with them to make that happen, but we just want to say thank you for thinking of us and for that donation.
Do they have to do anything specific with the money?
They, so they have, they have their own kind of like website that pulls in from different resources that they can shop from. So it's kind of like a voucher. And then I think they, they call and say thank you and they're supposed to take some photos of the supplies that they picked out and then send it into Subaru's.
That's cool.
That's it. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Ryan?
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you. A quick update from Lincoln Street School. As I had mentioned in the update that I gave last week, we had our spring concerts last Wednesday for fourth and fifth grade band as well as fifth grade chorus. It was a great concert. A big thank you to Mr. Levergood, Mr. Carter for all the student growth and participation in our music programs this past year. We also had our art show. You can see a little bit of that right behind you. And our hallways are still pretty well decorated with a lot of the exhibits. The art room itself was a glow in the dark under the sea theme, which was a lot of fun. The kids and families, that was one of the highlights of the evening, was to go through that maybe multiple times and then go away to the concert. So a big thank you to Mr. Branch as well as some parent volunteers and staff members who donated time during the prep to pull it all together. Tomorrow, we have kind of an in-house field trip with the Sky Dome Planetarium, which is our first time with this group. But they will, students will enter a dome that will basically take up a good portion of our gym and they'll be introduced to a starfield sky that will look exactly like the stars appear at this time of the year. And they'll have kind of somebody who navigates them through that. They'll be introduced to some Greek mythological characters and see how these peers who pass to you that are the stars. And anyway, we're looking forward to it. We think it'll be a really positive thing and all three grade levels will be able to participate in that tomorrow. As Tanya said, thank you for May 24th. We're very much looking forward to it. We've been working quite a bit with our connections with Benchmark Dance going for May 24th as well as looking at our August days and making sure that we really get the teachers what they need for a good implementation. We have our last celebration of learning next Wednesday on May 22nd. Our fourth grade teams will host a celebration of learning event where they share their genius hour projects. These projects were largely student-driven. Students chose a topic of interest, developed a session question. Some topics, we've been working hard to prepare a presentation for their families and peers on next Wednesday. Third grade transition is underway, so our second graders are currently at Main Street School. We've had a lot of our third grade classes do the first part of that transition, which is where they go down to Main Street, introduce themselves to their buddy class. And I assume later this week and next week, we'll start seeing some of our second grade classes coming up for whether it be field tours, a chance to plan the playground and run our playground rules, which are kind of the next steps before they come up with their actual step up day. And we have a parent night as well for incoming grade three on June 5th at 5:30. Spring testing, we are also pushing, pushing, pushing. We are mostly completed our I-Rate reading diagnostic for the spring. Next week is our, the final phase of doing the extra SAS for math and we'll take care of that. And again, a big shout out to our students who are really putting in a great effort. Every time I check with teachers, I'm like, is their test fatigue? How are we doing? And basically, no, our kids are really taken seriously. They're working really hard to show what they've learned this year. So that's really exciting. We have our fifth grade celebration coming up. I just want to keep pumping that up. That's scheduled for June 6th at 6:00. We've sent out a save the date to families and we're going to send out a follow-up with like all the details this coming week, just to make sure that everybody is prepared for that. Our event is going to be June 6th, rain or shine. We'll move it to the gym if we do prefer the weather. Our event's schedule will include a guest speaker, acknowledgement of the completion of the DARE program by Officer Stephen Krasny, a fifth grade student speaker, and then a certificate for completion, also nice photo loss. Should be a little nice new tradition. And the very last thing is our Exeter Summer Skills Academy. The dates for ESSA this summer are July 9th to August 8th. The program runs for five weeks on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 8 to 12. There are 73 students registered between 8 and 5 this year. And then just as a reminder, we've also contracted the Brown Center for the Second Street Summer to work on social emotional learning through structured play, which was really well received last year. We're looking forward to that again.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you both. That accomplished. Great. Any questions for, great. All right. So we'll move into committee reports and I know some of these committees have met since our last meeting. So what I think we'll do is go through each one and for the, those who are on those committees, give the report and then we can talk about committees going forward. Does that sound good? Great. So DEIJ, we have Beth and Susan have been on that committee.
So this committee met or attempted to meet yesterday morning. I think that we're still struggling to find a good time to get the bulk of the audit done. So I think there's two, I think we're going on like every two weeks right now. Is that right, Abby? Feels like it. And so we're, the equity audit was just really sent out yesterday to say, it's going to be hard to get everybody in the same room before the end of the year, which is the goal. So answer what you can and then we need to go over it in person together. Did I get that right? Okay. We did discuss briefly at the end of the meeting around Andreas leaving, you know, and how we really want to make sure that the momentum of the Exeter School District DEIJ committee stays strong. So I think that'll be a nice way to end the year and then start next year as well. Yay. Right. We'll meet in two weeks.
And Esther, I don't know, did you want to make any update on sort of plans for hiring or is that?
I will add the joint board.
Great. That makes sense. Okay.
I can do it here too if you want me to. I just.
Either way.
We just have to hear it twice.
We'll hear it twice.
Sure. As you're aware, that Andreas Mejia has resigned and so we have posted it. We have, I think I looked yesterday, we had six candidates already. I would say skimming those two highly qualified for that kind of position. And so we hope to get more too. So that's where it's at. The process will be internal with me as always, because the joint board only hires me and then I hire everyone else. So I'll keep everybody informed, but I'm excited about at least two of them looking at briefly at the resumes that have come in.
That's great.
We're well on our way.
I was happy to see that it was a chief equity officer position.
I was just going to say, yes.
I think it puts a lot of weight behind that and how we value that in the community. So thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to echo the thank you for continuing to support DEIJ and to support it in Exeter Elementary, but across the SAU 16 and not skipping a beat and moving that forward. And just to echo that it's just been great to know Andres and wish him well and really excited for the foundation he laid for us.
Yep. There is a celebration, I just, I think it's May 21st. Does that sound right?
Next Tuesday.
Yep. On the Lincoln Street Playground, do I have that right? Or Main Street? Main Street Playground from 4 to 5. And everyone's welcome if they would like to come and say thank you for helping us move this along.
Great. Thank you.
And as a new board member, I had my first family member come to me and emphasize the importance of this role and wanted to make sure that we're doing everything we can to fill that with a highly qualified person. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, maybe we'll, maybe I'm going to, I'm going to go back on my, so looking forward, the two people that expressed interest in the DEIJ committee for the coming year are Beth, York, and Patrick O'Day. Everyone, so I think we've got our two people for that, which is great. So thank you both. I think we'll go through, let's do policy last since we have a bunch of policies to move through. We'll keep them, we'll come back to that one. So the superintendent evaluation committee, it was Patty and I. And I, we just met last week as a committee to review the feedback from all of the school boards as well as the 360 evaluation. So it was a really in-depth meeting and I think we will be presenting that at the joint school board meeting. So.
At the May joint board.
At the May joint, yes, joint school board meeting. Thank you. So any questions on that process? Okay. Great. And so for next year, we have two people who have expressed interest in the superintendent evaluation committee and that is Tim Reed and Beth York. Great. And I think Patrick has mentioned this before, but we are, not all of the school boards always have two people. We're really fortunate to have two people and it's great when both can show up, but if one, you know, can show up and the other can't, I think it's just important that we communicate so that at least we have the best chance of having one representative at those meetings.
How often does that one meet?
It has been meeting, it has been meeting monthly.
Okay.
I think this, this year, the meetings were Thursdays at 4:00 PM. They were at the central office, but I'm not sure if they've determined, do you know if they've determined their meetings?
I'm not 100% sure, but I'm anticipating, some of the work they did this year was to actually develop the process and I think people were happy with the process. So I anticipate it might be more quarterly. Because that's when I came, like a check on my goals with the committee with maybe one just organizational piece. So I'm not sure it'll be as often as every month, but that would, that would be the most it would be.
I would agree with that. There might be some tweaks to the process. So I imagine there would be some discussion of anything that comes out of the joint school board meeting, if there's any recommendations there. And then typically, in addition to designing the process or sort of revamping the process, obviously we worked with Esther on her goals and then we presented those to the boards. And so that process, I imagine, will be consistent. Great. Let's go on to wellness. So that is Susan. That's you.
We have a meeting, did you get that notification, Tim? Was a meeting coming up?
I don't think so, but.
But that's all I.
I don't think Tim would have gotten it yet.
Yeah, okay. Oh, right. It's in the morning meeting. This week, I think. Calendar with me.
So there's an upcoming meeting and you've scooped my news that it will be you and Tim caring for it in that committee. Okay, great. And then we have school safety, the School Safety and Security Task Force. And that was, Beth, I think that was you and Patty, correct?
Yes. Yep. There has not been a meeting.
Okay.
We're meeting the 24th.
23rd, next Thursday.
I'm sorry, 23rd. Yeah.
Okay.
Since the last time we met.
Okay, great. And so Beth, you've agreed to continue on with the task force and Tim, you'll be joining as our second person, which is great. All right. I'm going to go through the rest of the committees and we'll end with policies, so we can go through those policies. So for facilities, we have Beth, York, and Patrick O'Day on our facilities committee going forward. Patrick, of course, as chair of Exeter Elementary School Board, will be on the joint chairs committee. For negotiations, Patrick O'Day, and we needed a second person. I'm happy to be the second person on negotiations unless we have someone else who would like to be on that committee. Anybody? Going once, going twice? Okay. I'm happy to do that with Patrick. Sabbatical, we had, we have Susan Drinker and Patrick O'Day on our sabbatical committee. Strategic planning, right now it's just me. Happy to have a second person if anyone is interested in strategic planning. All right.
What is, how often is that one meeting?
So I just developed a timeline with ISABAR today. They're going to take a look at it. It's probably going to be what I'm calling the SPTF, Strategic Planning Task Force. That sounds great. So we'll be meeting probably once a month to, similar to what the vision committee did, like looking at a survey, how are you going to send that out? And then I'm hoping all the board members will be involved in that summit for the actual planning based on the data we get back and what we know. So one rep is, I think, sufficient because you have the opportunity to all be involved in the actual onsite strategic planning activity. That will be that half day, half day, half day all in a row. It looks like in March. And then we'll take that and do the action, measurable action steps based on the work done at the summit to hopefully present a one-pager, nice condensed, beautiful looking strategic plan in May to the full joint board. So it'll be, it'll be monthly. It might be a little more in the beginning and then all the board members involved, as many as can make it to that three half-day summit. And then the task force will then take that and pull out measure, develop action steps for measurable goals to meet the strategic plan. So.
Okay. So it sounds we're, we're okay with one person.
I think it seemed to work well with the vision summit that way, with the one person to kind of, it's about engagement and advertising.
Yeah, I think if we determine it not to be, like, we can add later, probably.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. Thanks, Beth. And then for Wheelwright Trust, we have Susan. Okay, great. And then for policy, to circle back, it looks like it'll be me and Patrick continuing on with the policy committee. And so we did have some policies to review under new business, but before we go into new business, does anyone have any other questions about the committees? Okay, great. I think we'll go, let's look at the policies and circle back to the board goals since we're just on committee work. Okay. So, hold on, give me a minute to get there. Okay, great. So we reviewed several policies, which are, there are summaries of those policies in your packet and you can see the changes. Some of these policies were new or, or many of them were actually revised, as you can see through the summary, because of changes in the law. So I'm just going to actually read the summary and then I'll give you a little bit of context for each one, but mostly just interested to see if anyone had questions or further things that they wanted to recommend for these policies. So the, the first two policies are, are related. So the first is Policy Code JIC. It's Student Code of Contact, Conduct, sorry. And this is a new policy and it's a policy that's required through the Department of Education. So it was a new law stipulating that school boards are required to have a policy for rules of conduct and penalties for misbehavior and be disseminated to parents and guardians. And so there were some amendments to that policy and just really trying to emphasize emotional and academic needs of students through support intervention, prior to using exclusion or suspension and expulsion. And I'm gonna just read the other policy too, and then we can talk about them together. So, that policy, this policy is connected to the one just below it, which is Policy Code JICD, and that's Student Discipline and Due Process. And so, again, this policy was revised, so it's a, this one's a revision of a current policy. And again, this one is related to ensuring emotional and academic needs of students through support and intervention. It does things like limit suspensions to 20 days, limits the reasons a student may receive of suspension, and, and sort of has stipulations around standards for short-term suspension, et cetera. So, these were long policies, and I think we just, I think for these policies, I'll just say, and, and when we get to the one around Policy JKAA, this was a long meeting, we talked a lot about being very clear on definitions of terms, making sure that there wasn't anything in these policies, and this goes for the one below it too, which we'll talk about in a minute, that couldn't, that we were sticking to the law, and also being really clear, so that if the policy did need to be followed, suspension was required, et cetera, or that it's really, really clear when, when things move into process. So, first, I'm just gonna ask, let's do these two first, are there any questions or comments related to Policy Code JIC and JICD?
No.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve Policy Code JIC and JICD?
Motion to approve JIC and JICD?
Any discussion?
Appreciate the thorough, just throwing it out so that it's, it's very clear that hopefully the school administrators really came through and reading through them.
Great, thank you for that. So, we have approved Policy Code JIC and JICD, and then moving on to Policy Code JKAA, this is called Use of Restraints and Seclusion. This is a revision of a current policy, and I'm just gonna actually read, so this was a revision in September of 2023, there were substantial revisions, and I'm just gonna read this, because it's a little complicated, and then I'll tell you a little bit more about the discussion. The impetus for revision was the 2023 passage of SB 179 and HB 491, and they refined the definition of seclusion, they added a requirement for the use of co-regulators, they added a specific definition and prohibition of the use of prone restraint, which previously would have been prohibited as a form of dangerous restraint technique. And then there was, you know, policies relative to mandating reporting. This is probably the policy we spent the most time on in our meeting, and again, I just want to underscore the, much of this policy is, we're legally mandated to, but we felt that it was just really important to be incredibly clear about what we were talking about, and very transparent around expectations, as much as we were able. So, hopefully, that was reflected in the suggestions we made. Any discussions on Policy Code JKAA? Okay, can I have a motion to approve Policy Code JKAA?
Can I move, make a motion to approve Policy JKAA?
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, Policy Code JKAA is approved.
All those in favor.
All those in favor, see?
Aye.
Great, aye.
Did I do that for the last one?
I don't think you did.
Okay, can I do that, should I do that again?
Just, all those in favor to approve, the first two, I don't.
All those in favor to approve JIC and JICD.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. You got my back, I'm glad about that. Okay, so, these next two policies, the first one, JLCF, was around wellness, nutrition, and physical activity. This is, again, a required policy, and it, it's, I mean, maybe more straightforward than the others, around policies for food and nutrition and physical activity. One of the things that, you know, we, there were things like how to use water bottles, and what can be in water bottles, and water filling stations, so it was pretty detailed. We had a long discussion about water bottles. But, any questions on this one?
Will there have to be any infrastructural changes with the new water filling station department, or do we already have those?
Yeah, we have them in our building, so we're good there. I'm not 100% sure about East Kingston and Kensington, I'm pretty sure, yep, Kensington has one in the, as you walk in, in East Kingston, just trying to think when I walk in the building. I think they have one also too, right near the bathrooms.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's talk about the, the next one, and then we can, so the next policy was EFAA, that's Meal Charging. There were no content changes to this policy, it was a revision, there were some, we, we spent some time on grammar, but it meets the requirements of the state and federal law, and we're required to review it periodically. Any questions on that one? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Back to the wellness one.
Yeah, please.
Like, we have the Wellness Committee, does the policy, like, we have ours, or do we have, okay, let me back up. It says that we need to have a committee that meets no less than four times a year, so is that ours, or is that for the whole district?
It's a separate, it's an SAU-16 Wellness Policy.
Okay.
That'll incorporate everybody.
Okay.
Yes, yep, so you can still have this one here, but you'll also have this here for the, to meet the regulation, the federal regulations, and the policy itself.
Yeah, cool, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, great, can, I have a motion to approve Policy Code JLCF and Policy Code EFAA.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that was the Policy Committee. Thank you, guys. Those, I know those were long, but they're important, so appreciate that. Great, so I think the next thing on new business that we have is a discussion of board goals, and if I'm remembering correctly, I think I'm gonna go ahead and just read the ones that we currently have, they're on the bottom of our agenda every month, but just for those that are listening, and so we can kind of just center ourselves in them, and then we can talk about them if they're, these were board goals that we discussed, they say 20, 22, 23, but they're really 23, 24 goals. So, we did make some changes to these last year, and these are sort of our guiding North Stars priorities for the year, and just as we, as a, as a board, in support of the work happening in our schools. I'll read them, and then if we wanna discuss them now, and we, we don't have to decide tonight, so we can come back if we wanna make any changes for the June meeting. So, we have five, we came up with five last year, and some of these are sort of revisions to longstanding goals, I wanna articulate that. The first is to seek, seek to establish and maintain partnerships and effective communication lines with our families and community. Two, strive to ensure that our schools are fully welcoming and supporting all students and families by considering diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice as a core value. Three, support efforts to close student achievement gaps while working to improve academic performance for all students. Four, actively support the ongoing development and review of safety and security initiatives at our schools. And five, support social, emotional wellness of our students, staff, and school community in meeting the holistic needs of our population.
So, can I add?
Yeah.
So, just so folks that maybe weren't familiar, number one, one reason that was, that goal was worked on through that survey that we sent out, so that'll go over to the strategic plan, and I think continue to be worked on. The DEI is obviously, you have your committee, and you'll be doing that audit, and then the achievement gaps, that's why we do the three presentations on the data, so you, so the board is aware how students are making growth and progress. The safety and security, we have that audit, that you're welcome to come to the SAU and read, we don't do that publicly, because it's an audit that tells us areas that we need to improve on. We share some of that in our safety and security meeting, however, we are in really good shape. Some of the suggestions are financially out of reach, that the state would make, but certainly, we have done things that would support that, the same area of safety. And then, the last one, that social, emotional, you can see, I know the summer programming, that Brown Center continues to do that, as well as they do a screening with DESA and continue that work, so, just so the board knows that the school looks at these goals and tries to present metrics to the board, so you can have, see the progress that's measurable on them.
And I'll just say, the fact that you could rattle that off so quickly, like, is credit to also all the wonderful reports that we've received throughout the year, it's really clear that the reports are grounded in these values too, and I know that while these are, you know, anyway, I know that they're often shared values, and that we're working on them together, so. So, I think I'll just open it up, I mean, does any, I think, I think we can talk about anything that we definitely, you know, if these values, if these goals feel like we just wanna keep them and move forward, or we wanna tweak them, or there's something missing, or you need, feel clear, you wanna clarify, I think we can talk about that today, and then we can put it on our agenda too, for next time to make any final changes.
I wonder if the first goal also is some of the intent behind it, like what we, in addition to the communication survey, like, what we as a board can do in our community that's differently too, like, I don't, I don't know if we wanna think about that differently.
I do know that some of the other Exeter Elementary School Boards have thought about different ways of, you know, receiving feedback from community before board meetings, I think one of them actually even meets, I could be speaking out of turn, so I'm not gonna say that, but I think, yeah, just they're thinking actively about what are the feedback loops as a board, like, and also, when information gets presented to them, is there a way that the board can make sure that it's shared beyond.
Ambassador, almost, of it, yeah.
So, there, there are some elementary school boards that have done that, so I think.
I think that the main function for the board around this is really around budget, so maybe considering how would you reach out to some folks that don't come to our meeting, for example, a population that doesn't have children in our schools, how would the board reach them? I know in the past, that's been something that boards have considered as far as community engagement, because generally speaking, that's a huge part of the role of this board, and it's a huge interest to the entire community. So, that may be one area, as you're thinking about what other, what other ways can we get a feedback loop and engagement, I know I have reached out to some of the River Woods and things like that to get on their calendar for next year, because you have to get on way ahead, which I didn't know, so when I called to ask to come, they were like, oh, you gotta get on the agenda way before this, so I'm on the agenda for next year, but maybe someone from the board would wanna come with me, to do that, kind of go over the budget and answer questions and things like that. So, that's one area, yeah.
I agree. They have more presentations at the library too, that might be.
So, oftentimes, the board, if they feel like there's a need, or even if they want to reach out, that's one topic that's, I know, always interesting to many people.
Yeah. I think also another example was that, was that, the SAU-16 Communication Survey, the board members that were on that committee, we really tried to get, you know, the word out to, you know, River Woods, or, you know, in some towns that had a town bulletin to make sure it was included, and I think that really helped reach folks that might not have otherwise gotten those communications.
Yes, I think that was very helpful, for our board members to reach out to their local publications, because I will say, in my 13 years in central office, that summit was the most well-attended event with community members that I've ever attended, so I think that helped when a board member reaches out, and it isn't just me with posting things around and trying to go to the libraries and things, I think that means a lot when they recognize the name of their own community member, reaching out or giving someone a story, so that was helpful, thank you.
And Esther, one thing I'll, I'll just say too, is if you ever, as you move forward, I know partnership, community partnerships has been a priority of yours, if there are certain groups that you would really like to engage in Exeter that aren't coming to events, or maybe aren't, you know, engaging in surveys and things like that, that I would invite you to let us know, so that we might be able to help you reach those communities as residents of Exeter.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great. Beth, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the goals?
I really love that the goal, I think they're all encompassing of our, our mission as a board and as an SAU, so I love our goals, actually.
I forgot too, another thing that you all did to support the efforts to close the student achievement gap was approve the funds for the reading program.
Thanks for telling us all the great things we accomplished.
I think they're great goals, I think they are broad enough, but yet specific enough, so we can measure them, and we can ask for data, as you can for, as a board, so, and it kind of hits all the things I imagine will be in our strategic plan.
Great, yeah, we did spend some time, but do think about them, so sometimes if you need to simmer with it and think about it, we can bring it back to the agenda in June before approving them. Great. All right, any other new business? All right, let's move on to old business, I think this is you, Susan. We have a Wheelwright proposal.
Beth, I may have chatted. That was on my question, actually.
Here, hold on, let me help you.
In front of me, thank you.
If I can, is it in this one? I know I read it, but I don't know if it was in the packet.
Beth, do you wanna come up and?
Yeah. Beth, would you mind? I think it was a, a separate attachment.
It was under separate cover.
I'm not working here.
So. So, this proposal was put forth by the Speech and Special Education Department at Main Street School. It's, they're requesting 11 four-brain devices, is what they're called, so some members of the department, they did a trial run with a few of these devices with small groups of students, and so the device is actually like a headset that the students put on when they're doing some small group intervention work, particularly in the areas of like phonology and some speech work, and the, what it does is it actually stimulates the brain's auditory processes, and it strengthens their attention, memory, speech, and other important life skills, so it, it's actually, acts as like an amplifier for when they're speaking, is very similar to a microphone, where they hear a lot of feedback, and the, where it rests on the head, it actually works through some vibrations that are right here on the bone, that's right in front of the ear. So, for the students, it amplifies the, what they're hearing, but it also amplifies like the instructor, so when she's giving directions, or asking them questions, or asking for feedback and whatnot, it actually amplifies her or his voice, even without them wearing like a microphone or anything. So, their request. So their request is for 11 devices. So each of the special educators would, are asking for two devices to use with small groups or individual work. And then the speech department is asking, requesting a device for each of the personnel that work in that department to be able to use with students. And they, they did do a pilot program, and they felt like they had some great success with using it with, with a small group of students over time. So the overall request is for the 11 devices, and then there's microphone covers for cleanliness that need to be purchased, with the total amount requested is $3,487.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You know, just having used an amplification program when I was teaching in the classroom with a whole class got it, whereas this is specific to speech and language for small groups to help them with those phonological tasks and skills, I think is immeasurable. And I, and Beth, and I chatted at length about this, and it was very successful in the small groups that, that, you know, tried, did a trial on it. So I think it's a valuable addition for their program.
Any other questions? Beth, would this be something that, that, I mean, I assume like, do we have a sense of like how often they have to be replaced?
I don't know the actual devices.
Okay.
I would imagine like any other tech pieces, a three to four-year lifespan, depending on how often you use it. The microphone covers, low cost.
Right.
So those could easily be, be replaced as needed. But the devices itself, I would imagine like a triple phone, like Chromebook type replacement.
So essentially, we could help get this started, and then it could be something that we put budget for going forward. Okay. I think it sounds, I think it sounds like a great idea from an access point of view, but curious what others are thinking.
And, and you mentioned that they saw, teachers saw gains in student outcomes.
Yeah, yeah, they saw, they used it in a, like a one-on-one situation and then with a small group situation. And they saw market increase in students being able to produce sounds, hear their own sounds. They had some really good valid results from it over a three-month trial period, so.
Any other questions or thoughts on this one?
I just wanna shine in one more time, but I think it fits perfectly in our, in our goal and mission with the Wheel Right Trust. Our funds are there. I agree. I totally support the purchase of the, these devices.
So do we have to take an official motion? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the Wheel Right Trust proposal for the 11 devices and covers at a cost of $3,487?
Motion to approve the Wheel Right Fund's application for the 11 devices at $3,487.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. I think we do have a, okay. Thank you. I knew you were gonna. All right, and if I don't say it correctly, Esther will help me out. So we do need to go into non-public. And can you help me with the, what I actually have to say here?
Sure. We would need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A3-C.
Great. We have a motion to go into non-public.
Motion.
And so go to.
And then we do a roll call, a roll call, so.
Aye?
Aye.
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 All right. So we will go into non-public. It's 6:55. We'll turn off the microphones, and then we'll come back after that. Great. So we're coming out of non-public at 7:14. And I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent.
Okay, do I have a second? Second? Susan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. And so this meeting is adjourned at 7:15.